All right, let's call to order the work session for the Board of Supervisors. We're meeting in the Supervisors Hearing Room in Melody Lane. Student ARS 38431.02H publicly will have access to the meeting room 15 minutes prior to starting the meeting. Any item on this agenda is open for discussion. Members of the Board of Supervisors will attend in person or via Microsoft Teams. Members of the public may also attend via Microsoft Teams or the mobile app. Work sessions are a time for the county staff to inform and discuss agenda items with the Board of Supervisors, and public comment will not be taken. We'll do a roll call. District One, Crosby is here. District Two.
Well, Ms. T.
And District Three, Anthony Ray is here. All Supervisors are present and in person. And I guess we move. Is this Casey too, or is this Gilman?
This is me.
All right, Ms. Gilman, you got it.
Summer and Julie Morales from Risk Management is here. Risk management falls into the Board of Supervisors Department budget. So first, I'm going to go through other aspects of the Board of Supervisors Department budget. When we get to Risk Management, I'll hand it over to you. So the Board of Supervisors Department budget is broken out first by Supervisor District One, Supervisor District Two, Supervisor District Three, and then fifty activities refers to what we do in our office with the clerk of the board and myself and Joe. So you got elected official wages for Supervisor District One.
Where is?
On just the very first page.
Okay.
So that's each elected official being each of you, your wages listed there, benefits.
So you have them in District One, two, whatever, can I see that?
So what's with the big jump in EYORK from 26 to 60K? What is that? Elected official.
Okay. Oh, it's, it is one of those. The EYORK contribution rates are extremely high.
It's okay.
So it is sixty. We budgeted sixty, we've spent twenty-six so far.
We've actually spent. Oh, okay, I'm making it wrong. I apologize. God, it freaked me out when I saw that. I thought it was 25 last year.
Oh, on behalf of all involved dentists, I think this dental insurance thing is a bunch of crap.
Well, we can pay that for the year.
Yeah. Anyway, that's nothing.
The main thing I want to point out in each Board Supervisor, there is a professional services line. That's your community enhancement line. I'm looking at.
Okay.
Community enhancement.
Community enhancement.
Which one?
Well, we don't like to call it that. That's Tom. There is a policy related to it. So it's used for projects within your district that are related to all-in-waste or development services.
Or how we like.
Community cleanup.
Community cleanup, that kind of thing.
Most frequent uses to some church group, youth group wants a dumpster, and so they're going to clean up. I use all of mine. I like clean up the neighborhood. Neighborhood. Okay, so I use all of mine for Miracle Valley Cleanup. Seventy grand, and then we sold it for 250. I hope that somebody is going to come through with the money. All right, good deal. That was, you know, your Miracle Valley. It was just the biggest mess.
They sold it, right? Did you sell it?
And the reason you're probably not as familiar with it, Supervisor Anthony Ray, is because it was all spent by your predecessor this year. So you have some, he has some for the next.
So he has nothing.
Maybe.
He loved. I still have some.
What was it spent on?
Let me see. I believe a lot, some community cleanup. She did some.
There was a big giveaway.
Yes, that's those.
A big giveaway.
One of them was the pool at Wilcox she helped with, the community cleanups. I can give you a detail of what she spent on.
Again, talk to you guys. But they come before the Board for approval. We put them on the agenda, and if it's outside of the, if it's an other category, it has to have a majority vote or unanimous vote by the Board.
You have like a policy on that?
Yeah.
Can you send me ones?
Yes. You can't give it to a private person to fix up their property.
No, but I mean, like, not just food bake, you know. Can you give it to a food bake?
I don't know, maybe. I sent it to you in the last week.
Okay, okay. I just didn't see.
Food bakes.
So that's, the policy allows for 100,000 each.
Hey, I tried to give deer meat to food banks and they never wanted it.
Food code.
It's good stuff.
It's good stuff, yeah.
But they won't take it. They won't take, they won't take.
It's not done through a plant.
Yeah.
So the policy allows up to 100,000. A few years ago, we decreased that to 75,000 for each Board member. So that's their REUs. And then the other thing I want to point out for each person, each Board member's activity is pretty much the same. So going to page three of eight, halfway down is BOS Activities, fifty, 0110. And that's the wages for the department. I saw Joe, Laura, Melissa, Lisa, Shane, and Stacy all in there. And various benefits.
And only because I can't see. So District Two, is this this one here?
No.
It only gets right.
District Two starts here.
Okay.
And everything down.
I got you now. Okay. Let's see that.
All the travel journey.
Heading supplies.
Would it be like we had that little thing for the hunting and zoning? You know, we had sandwiches.
Oh, okay, okay, okay.
So for instance, if I wanted to do a, plan to do a college, President of Cochise College come down to Douglas to have a greeting meet and answer questions, what's happening?
And you have drinks?
We can take it out. Yeah.
Chips or something.
Two.
District Two, 75,000.
You have event planning supplies.
Oh, I do, too. Yes.
And then primary thing within that is that we created. Not a fear. For the legal, oh, yeah, it is. So under BOS Activities on page four of eight, 421.100, we added this line for legal professional services to be more clear about our professional, rather than lumping them all into professional services. We wanted to break out legal professional services so that was more transparent opposed to what we were paying for outside legal counsel.
Good, good.
Yeah, that's good.
So long distance is what? The longest.
So I just circled back because I need to be removed from here.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, goodness.
Yeah, no, we shifted to a different protocol. That's all.
Okay.
I got my note.
Six grand for cell phone service. That's.
All of the people within our.
That's everybody.
That's anybody's cell phone service.
How many people it comes under this? Is be like you.
It's usually, it's like a thousand bucks a year per person? Is that what it is?
It's about forty, forty bucks a month. Yeah, or 500, 500 bucks a year per person.
Well, that's pretty cheap, forty bucks a month.
And our department in particular, we like for people to have, not be using their cell phone. We want them to use accounting.
Yeah, yeah, sure, sure.
Particularly in the nature of farmer.
HR falls under us, too. Is it divided by these guys?
HR is its own department.
So who are the cell phone users then?
Myself, Joe.
But I mean, so what I get at is.
My interests. Laura.
So it's everybody in this building? Okay, okay, okay.
Why do you do?
In this section.
Yeah. Free news. So.
I'm assuming the conversation. Fabric, fabric leases and rental, that's under. Oh, that's a big. It's fine. Hey, what is that just curious me?
Agenda quick.
Oh.
Be a big part of that.
That's the software.
Because that's going to be software that's unique to the Board Office.
County promotion. Is that the feel-good?
County promotion. Looking at the amount because I was getting. Yeah, that's our giveaways and stuff.
Yeah, with swag.
Swag. Awards and things like that, teaching, things we take to promote the county.
Oh, okay. She has bags and mugs and. Yeah.
And then we are in.
All right, then we're done with risk management.
So our budget is funded very similarly. Wages for key of the staff members that we help manage, safety, and all the associated REUs as well. General office supplies, small fund for safety equipment. Typically, this last year, we purchased CPR equipment for internal CPR programs. So now we're teaching. We have a train, the trainer group in the county. So now we're conducting CPR training for county employees from this point forward. And so there's some setup costs for the equipment for that. Fleet charges, we get, we get charged for a department vehicle that we use to go out inspections and for other services. The professional services line, which was originally funded based on an ADOSH issue that we had in employee injury.
It's Arizona's OSHA.
A fine associated with that. That was initially funded in the 2021 budget at $5,000. And the agreement with ADOSH was, as opposed to us paying the fine, they asked us to put that back in our budget, match it, and do employee training. So we've done. The CPR program was born out of that and.
What was the, again, the original gig that ADOSH found? What was it?
So the fine for the injury, the employee injury which resulted in a fatality was $2,500. And there was some, and I can talk to you offline about that. But there were some minor equipment labeling suggestions and other things that came out of that fine. So it wasn't a large fine because there were sort of some small findings. The fine was 2,500. At the time, the county administrator agreed to match 2,500 for a $5,000 fund that we put towards training. So we did some ADOSH training, some OSHA 10 training, OSHA 30 training, worked with the Public Works Department to get some of those machines labeled with that funding. So it was a safety effort primarily at Public Works as a result of that. This is a drawdown fund. So it was initially $5,000 in each fiscal year that we've been spending my time. We've just been depleting it. So there's only a small amount left in that now.
And we don't have to spend on that anymore.
Well, it's only $57.59, so I'm having a hard time finding anything this fiscal year that I can spend on that.
Labels, stickers.
Yeah. So that's the bulk of that. And then we have the typical cell phone service, a small travel budget, a training budget, which 423, 400 R budget, that is being primarily used. The majority of that is going to be used for the CPR training going forward. We have the internal group that will be teaching, but the American Red Cross requires that we pay like $40 for the certificates for each attendee. So that will come out of that fund moving forward. So the largest expenditures, the largest part of the risk management fund are the next two lines. We have an insurance line, which includes the premium that we pay to the Arizona County's insurance pool, along with a couple of other separate policies with regard to liability insurance. And then the last line is the judgment damages and settlement line, just $350,000, which is earmarked for risk management to pay for all general fund losses, damages, claim settlements, basically.
So we've only spent 162K so far this year, is that what?
For the judgment and damages?
Yeah.
Yes. Now, we still have three months.
No, I got you, but there's deductibles and everything is included in that? That includes our deductibles?
It does include our deductibles, yeah.
Do we, do we decide instead of reporting it? So normal insurance, if you file a claim, your insurance goes up, right? I would assume the same thing applies if we get sued and we file a claim with ASIP and we're found liable, we pay our deductible, but our insurance goes up, right?
It's all part of the analysis into the next year, yes.
Right, right. So do we decide sometimes whether it's maybe not worth it to? So say it's like 38K, right? So we're going to get a 25K deductible. Is it better just to pay the 38K rather than to turn it into ASIP?
Did you let me answer that? So the way that it's currently structured in general is this includes every claim. So this can be a windshield that a citizen gets damaged that they file a claim for, a tire spike.
But we pay.
So if it's below a certain amount and it's, there's no question about the liability of it, the legal premise, then that's typically handled at risk management or at county attorney. There's not a dollar, a specific dollar threshold. It's just sort of the complexity of, there's no injury or ongoing, you know, no complex property damage, then we will typically handle that, again, either at risk management and/or the county attorney here internally. For county vehicle damages, that's also something that ASIP handles. So we don't typically engage them at all if it's below our $5,000 deductible. Fleet handles that with risk management. We work that out. The larger cases that involve death, significant injury on or ongoing medical that we would be obligated forever to pay, depending on the complexity of it, the nature of the case, if it's a specialty that the county attorney is not comfortable litigating, then those would be tendered to ASIP.
So what I think the question is, if it was over that 25,000, say, $25,000 deductible, if it was over that by a little bit, is there a process in place to say, okay, no, we won't send that to insurance? We'll just pay it, you know, 35,000 rather than 25,000 deductible?
There is an evaluation between risk. We often consult with ASIP. Depends on who it is, what the department is. If it's a, if it's a legal matter, then we'll consult with the county attorneys on that. If it's a fleet matter, then obviously I will talk with fleet about that. So, yeah, there, I mean, there's not a written protocol, but there is a formal procedure that we go through to analyze at what level that would be tendered to ASIP or handled internally. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, kind of. I mean, I'm just curious.
It's a fascinating.
Sometimes, sometimes the, you know, the savings from premium increase is less to pay it directly than it is to turn it in and, you know, go cheap and say, oh, I just have to pay my deductible. But then over the next 10 years, the insurance company gets all that money back by raising your premiums.
Well, and we are the insurance company technically because we're tools. So that's the value of having county administration on that board because they weigh in on that. And the, one of the values of.
It's kind of like a co-op.
Yeah, one of the values of spreading that liability out is the, I mean, we have individual EMODs for each entity to control that. But that's, one of the values of spreading that out is if one entity has a particularly bad year, it doesn't necessarily mean that the entire premium would go up just for that individual orbit.
Yeah, but if you got one county that's getting in trouble a lot and things bad all the time, there's got to be a mechanism for that.
ASIP manages that, yeah.
And as a board, those discussions take place when one county is becoming too much a liability. And for example, from a cybersecurity standpoint, there was a, it's been a multi-year conversation about how we can limit the liability and the exposure of the pool to cyber attacks that happen in other counties. And by strengthening every county's cybersecurity and working together, running our knowledge to other counties and they providing us their knowledge, having that network, we're able to limit our exposure.
Yeah.
Not have that kind of.
And you sit on that board? Oh.
And then speaking of, I believe we will see an increase in ASIP over the next year, primarily due to risk claims related, the risk analysis related to Cochise County's activities.
The what?
So we are anticipating a slight increase to the premium that we saw last year for ASIP. So last year, the premium that we paid was 709, 780. And we're anticipating tentatively 806, 780 this year. Oh, no, that's, I'm sorry, 700,000. That's an annual premium. Apologize. Yeah.
And why, why is it being raised because we have a certain amount of claims or?
So it's a combination of things. The primary thing that occurred is that ASIP does not do a property appraisal, an actual in-person property appraisal every year. So they will use an estimator. So for the past several years, they've used a 5% estimator of what they believe that property values will increase. They actually did an in-person appraisal of our property last year, where an appraiser went and visited most of our sites.
You talk to counties.
County buildings, our property, our buildings, our transfer stations, anything that we hold liability for, physical property. And based on the results of that actual physical appraisal, not just the estimate, the property values have gone up quite significantly. So they are looking at about an 8% increase on top of the 5% estimate that they were using each year. That is still below what we're currently budgeted at. We think we're at 888. I'm sorry. No, that's okay. I can look at it here. Yeah, 888, 580.
So this is just me throwing out options. So we're paying almost a million in premiums right now. Has anyone looked to see if there's another insurance company out there that might be able to provide similar coverage for less than a million bucks a year?
So if I could, if I could make a pseudo argument.
Okay, okay.
I would suggest we not look at ASIP like it's just an insurance company. So it provides a very comprehensive claims mitigation, risk management consultation process. Like Sharon said, there's, you know, you look at the risk with regard to her example of cybersecurity. And they don't just up the level of cybersecurity coverage. They do an in-depth analysis of public sector risks that we face specifically here in Arizona. And then they will work with their individual consultants and anyone they can use to increase like the training. They provide suggestions, Joe's part of that group with cybersecurity, where we roll out pool-wide initiatives and efforts that frankly, on an individual basis, we likely would not have access to or could afford.
And I would also add that there are some aspects of Cochise County, particularly our proximity to the border and the risk that certain, that the Sheriff's Department entails just by being a sheriff's department on the border that raises our exposure. And some insurance companies might find that difficult to cover.
But there hasn't been any shopping.
No, there hasn't been shopping.
I mean, just, just talk about like internet shopping, just like Googling and searching around. Just somebody to.
And I do have Cynthia Malusi, Executive Director of ASIP, coming to write a briefing to the Board to fully understand all the services they provide that are outside what we could probably obtain through standard of insurance.
This comes back, you know, I don't want to be cautious of Mr. Crosby here, but this comes back to the issue again, and Skolman and I are concerned about is getting sued or getting prosecuted by an overzealous, let's just, for example, say Attorney General. You know, that likes to go after people, you know, and we go to the county attorney and the county attorney says this or says that, and then runs to ASIP and tells ASIP, you know, one thing or another thing, and then ASIP decides not to pay or cover a claim. That's my, that's my.
Without getting into that specifically?
Yeah, without getting into, I'm just, for example, you know. That's my.
Answer that without getting into that areas.
So the insurance doesn't cover that. That's where I'm getting at, right? So I have.
Very commonly, insurance doesn't.
So I have insurance, legal insurance, that I'm going to lose this summer because I'm retiring. But I have legal insurance that covers civil, criminal, whatever. I pay insurance to cover that. So, I mean, and regardless of what it is, I get, I get insurance for that, right? So I can't understand why the county can't get insurance for that. Why we can't get insurance so.
For personal criminal behavior?
Well, no.
Yes, I mean, again, like I, if I go out and get a reckless driving or a DUI, I have this insurance that I get an attorney for a fraction of the cost because I've been paying premiums into this insurance, legal insurance, right? This personal, like as a benefit of my, you know, perks were.
But you pay for it.
Right, I do pay for it, but I mean, where I'm getting at for the county here, ASIP doesn't pay for that, right? So.
And that's why I don't want to go.
I got you, I got you. But I'm saying, are there other insurance companies out there?
I don't understand how that is. I mean, it's a real basic question. I mean, because, you know, I'm asking about doing a DUI. I'm saying just about doing county business.
We do have the errors and omissions coverage, which if you can explain, Julie, a little bit more.
So there is, it is a very robust coverage for professional services. And if there are, in the course and scope of the work that you do for the county, whether it's elect or appointed, within the course and scope of the work that you do, that is defined as legal, then it is covered.
That's the problem.
Yeah, there are very.
The fine is legal. By who?
By the law.
But that's getting.
By the law, that doesn't.
I know.
That doesn't acquire the situation you're talking about.
As part of ASIP, though, is it, that's what CSA uses, correct? So is ASIP also a problem because it's so intricate with dealing with all the other counties? So then it becomes a knowledge base that other companies don't have because they're not above board? Do other states have another company other than ASIP that they use?
You mean other states, other counties?
Well, the state, doesn't CSA use ASIP? Most of the counties uses?
Yes, 13 of the 15.
13 of the 20.
You're the person.
And Arizona are in this ASIP. And then the other two that aren't, Pima and Maricopa, run their own individual.
So.
Insurance to their own. So it's kind of, is it a monopoly? Is that it's hard to find?
I don't consider it a monopoly.
But if we went with somebody else and then there were one out of 13 that is using, not using ASIP, is that detrimental to us being able to get things carried in on?
We don't know. That's the thing, because we didn't go shopping.
Right, and one of the reasons, you're correct, we have not shopped in a while. But one of the reasons that we did this ages ago now is that we were priced out of the market. The county could not, based on our individual experience, we could not afford any level of adequate insurance coverage for all of our liabilities. I mean, the policies that we have cover everything. They cover workers' comp, they cover property, they cover all of our, all of our assets, basically. And the professional liability associated with it for all of our employees, within the course and scope of their work, every employee who might be out there. So.
No, what we're concerned about is us, right?
Yeah, yeah. Again, we had this discussion before. If we, in good faith, think we're doing something, well, again, we'll use your example, Tom. I mean, that's, that's an example. So you and Miss Judge decide that this is what your constituents want, and you want to do some due diligence or whatever, and then you get an opinion from the county attorney that's contrary, which again, I've always said it before, anytime, at one given time in any court, there's a, there's one attorney that's always wrong and possibly two that are wrong, right? So attorneys aren't infallible, and they have opinions. That's why they call them legal opinion. It's an opinion, it's not a fact, right? So one attorney can go cause a significant amount of damage, as we've seen, by going and talking to people and saying certain things to people. And then the damage that results from that comes and blows back on us. And so we made a decision that we thought was a good decision up there, right? That decision was made up there in the course of their duties, yet ASIP won't pay for it, won't cover it. That's my point.
And I think in this, in that example, the issue, the level of charges.
Yeah, I get it, but I'm saying, it's just.
Something to continue to discuss as we go start.
The legislature, I'll give you an example. Legislature, if I make a vote on the floor of the legislature, if I say anything on the floor of the legislature, I'm immune. I have immunity, right? The Board of Supervisors does not have immunity. Maybe I should have that right there.
Maybe you should add that to yours.
Add that to the list, the legislation function. But you, when you do procedures and stuff, you, there's a, and that's the reason for it, is that example right there, that is the reason for it. So you don't have an overzealous Attorney General or somebody that wants to make a political statement and come after you personally. That's why they have immunity for that very reason. But we don't have that immunity, as we've seen, right? So we should have insurance or something to cover that. Because what occurred was in the opinions of, at the time, a good-faith execution of what they thought was doing what their constituents wanted. And because they got an attorney that gave an opinion that was contrary to their vote, which they thought was their opinion, that attorney created a situation where, again, that attorney created a situation where, again, the Attorney General decided to make a big federal case out. That's the problem. And insurance didn't cover it. It wasn't like.
Find an insurance company that would, under the way the laws are currently written.
Parents against county attorneys on?
Maybe, maybe we should just ask the legislature to extend immunity for the board supervisors in their official duties when they're in a meeting and voting at a, at a regular meeting that, that procedures there are covered. Something maybe I still fix for that. It'd be cheaper than insurance.
Okay, so we're going down and finishing.
We should do that.
Water projects.
We should do.
Seven? Ninety-nine thousand?
Are you trying to look at?
BOS projects, there it is.
Page one's filled, that's, yeah. So under BOS, for those water projects, I believe in the next fiscal year, we have. Yeah, we tested, but um. This is water. We're, um, Arizona Cooperative Extension.
This is the University of Arizona's Cooperative Extension.
The Waterwise program specifically.
And that is, if I remember correctly from when I was in the co-op board, Waterwise, I didn't understand what it, what it really accomplished. I know, didn't they use in, what you could, the base was part of that Waterwise way back then?
Yeah, it's about um, specific individualized education for how the county hall can serve water. I'm not still being carried over year over year. I think the clerk was doing some research on that.
Is anybody wasting water?
That is also covers the toilet rebates that we often.
For low water, if you purchase a, a new toilet that has low water, we get.
And, and the sewer lines get clogged, you gotta constantly, you gotta hire plumbers to untie your sewer.
I've seen anything, I mean, I remember back in two thousand eight, two nine, they like red or had a little, you know.
You can go to Camden and buy wallets and smuggle them. They got regular toilets.
Yeah.
Yeah. The five gallon toilet. Big find.
And then we.
Well, I just want to know what it's, what it, because I haven't seen, I, I mean, I haven't seen anything that. I saw a lot of Waterwise back in two thousand eight, two thousand nine, two thousand ten, but even, even the signs like, you know.
Yeah.
And I just don't know what, so we pay that to co-op, we pay that to the Arizona Cooperative Extension.
And they also paid eighty-seven thousand for.
Now I have them doing a good thing right now in Douglas, but I would really look at down the road, UVA Cooperative Extension and exactly how much we give and what we get out of that.
So it's within statute that we provide the agricultural extension?
Oh, so that's the, okay, but that's another one too. That's.
They provide us a, a invoice every year.
So are those two separate amounts or they're?
Two separate.
Okay, so we got the agricultural extension, which I would really like to know where that money goes. And then the water of ninety-nine thousand, which is for twenty-three and that.
You met with the new executive director of the ag extension?
No, we haven't been able to. But I still, I still think that needs to be kind of, I don't know what they're doing. There's so much politics in that organization to the point that it, it's ridiculous. And it becomes shifts up from Douglas to Wilcox and from small animal to big animal. And, and based on maybe Riverview's influence or this person's influence or that person's influence. And I just think there's too many influences and I, I don't understand what exactly it does. It did, I, I love.
They send in an annual report every year to the board, so I'll watch for that and make sure.
Yeah, I really want to know because they were doing, I thought they were doing really good when I was on it, not because I was on it, but it was really extensive. And now it seems to become very narrow and it's not reaching as many people. So, yeah. So when does that come up?
Uh, they usually give us their invoice here in about a month. It's been eighty-seven thousand for many years.
Yeah, well, we got eighty-seven thousand and then ninety-nine thousand, so that's a total of what?
No, they, the water projects, yeah, ninety-nine thousand, but we've only spent twenty-three thousand this year.
And what was the most, what was, did you spend?
And then we have the rest with, uh, we put some in there for the toilet rebate. It hasn't been as popular and we, so that's something that's.
Well, so that's comes as a water saving, okay.
It's a program that's a water.
Well, you know, and, and UVA to me, they withdrew their, their, their school and their programs in Douglas. They closed it off and a lot of people were taking classes and so that's gone. And now it's just in Sierra Vista. And I, so I understand, I'm, I'm, I mean, I think what they're doing like.
I think, I think we need to drag poor Stacy in here. And just sit in here with that screen up there or a screen here where we start, we go start at the top. And we just get the red pens on and we just start going down.
My job.
No, I'm serious. I, I think we start doing it. I think, and we, we, we give people an opportunity to come in and cry. Because I remember doing this, this, this was a great, great exercise. So you go in and you line all the line items out. You say, all these are subject to cut, 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 cut. You go down, you publish it and say, okay, come in and tell us why we shouldn't cut this. And everybody comes in, they give you the reason why. And if they don't give you a good enough reason, it's gone.
Well, these two programs definitely, I mean, I have a.
We, we just, we mark it, we, we get together with Stacy, we go through it line by line. We're gonna say, we're gonna cut, we may not zero it out. We say, okay, we're cutting this fifty percent, we're cutting this twenty-five percent.
Especially if you don't know what it's being used for.
So you go, what you, what you do, and this is, this is just a tool, you cut what you want to cut and you publish it. You put out a budget draft that says this is what gets cut. And then you open up the public opportunity or the departments to come in and argue why we should not cut that. Where, that's where you get the people coming in and explaining to you, well, Ms. Gomez, this is really where it's going. It's going to do this and it's for the children and it's for the, you know, they, they come in and they give you all the stuff and then you have to weigh that and decide whether it's valid or not. And if it's valid, then you put the money back. If it's not valid, it's gone.
Well, this, that, that's a hundred and what? I can't add this money, but that's a hundred, these are over a hundred and fifty?
I remember saving a hundred million dollars on cutting the art budget.
What is it become statute? That we have to pay eighty-eight, eighty-seven thousand. Yeah, the university has, well, you know, I'm sorry, they're second to Cochise College.
See, then, then that, that relates to the meeting with Correa to talk about all the lawsuits that we're gonna bring on.
That's why there's a legal.
Yeah. Because I want to, I want to, there's a bunch of stuff we need to, to seriously look at, trying to get overturned. Take it back to court. Because some of this stuff is.
It's expensive not to surrender.
Well, that's why they do it. They want you to surrender. They just do it, just suck it up. But I don't like that. I like to, I'm gonna fight back.
Well, you there, such a, and they own so much land and real estate, magnum.
Oh, well, we'll look at it. We'll look at, that's what I said. We gotta set up separate, separate budget sessions with just the three of us and Sharon and Stacy. And we just go through it line by line by line and we say, is it justified or not? We cut twenty percent here, ten percent here, fifteen percent. We go through, we do those cuts.
And then I guess it would make people, oh my gosh, we gotta start doing something. That show something for the money that we get.
And then you say, okay, then we're gonna do public meetings on June tenth, June fourteenth, June eighteenth. Come in and cry? And if you cry, good. If you're a good crier, maybe we'll put the money back. And if not.
But no, I, I think, I mean, this is kind of.
Not because the budget's gotta be done by July first.
But the tentative is June tenth, June eighth. June what? No, the eighth is the seventh.
Should be tenth.
What, what do you think?
Tenth.
I think we could set the property tax rate as soon as possible. And, and estimate uh, how much grants we are or are not gonna get. And then start looking at what are we likely to have as money incoming? And everybody, yes, start from there. Instead, instead of everybody coming in, well, I have this dream and I have that dream. And then you come up with the dream budget and we gotta say, no, 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 no dream here, no dream for you, all that kind of stuff. You, you, you tell all the departments, this is, this is, this is the damage that we're, that we're undergoing. It, it's, you could just come in and say, everybody get a six percent cut or something like that. But not without, that, that wouldn't be as prudent as figuring out what are we likely to have, okay? So uh, Mr. Linebacker said he sees a six percent increase in valuation. That's what he said. The past, I, I have and, and I've said, what are the past property tax rates? So by multiplying the past property tax rate times the valuation, we're gonna figure out what are we gonna have in property tax? And then you, you could, you could figure out, well, what are we likely to, how, how, how bad are we gonna get hammered on inflation, stuff like that? What's the inflation rate gonna be? Who was talking about? A, a rate of something, oh, I, I think it was you, you talked about.
Supreme.
Yeah, premium. So everybody's premiums are gonna go up. Every apartment, every person is gonna see the value of their earnings go down as they go to the grocery store and say, hey, I used to be able to buy more eggs than this, and so on and so forth. So uh, we're gonna have inflation, we're gonna have, i- in, in fact, that's, that's the key issue when you're looking at these, these valuations of property going up. You have to compare that against every, every place else where somebody might move and see, well, what are their valuations doing in San Danza Valley? And Casa Grande and all this kind of stuff. And then you know whether, whether your property rates are really going up or not or whether, whether your currency is just getting hammered. So if currencies just get hammered, that's a big warning sign that you better watch out and not, and not beat up your, your taxpayers or they're gonna leave or they're not gonna move here.
It fits tax county and the state right now.
On Wednesday, May fourteenth, we have a work session scheduled for discussion of county funding requests and revenue projections. That's when Stacy was planning to come before the board and say, these are the, as you've heard from all the departments, various funding requests. She's consolidated them all. She said, these are the funding requests that we've had that will increase our budget. These are our revenue projections, what we anticipate our revenue projection to be based on the property tax rate. And then, or a different rate. And then um, we can go through the budget and discuss those funding requests. If you want to approve any of them, great. So be it. Then how are we going to fund them? And how are we going to, um, we'll have the market compensation information for salary increases. And then we can also go through it like you, you suggested.
Yeah, Kathleen brought up a good point. There's, there's line items in here that you need to drill down into to see exactly, you know, just because they submit a funding request doesn't really.
Part of the story.
It's, so, yeah, that's what I'm getting at. So some of the drill down line by line that occurs when you do what I just said, you know, that you, you could, you could create a forcing function where you say, okay, we're cutting, like Tom said, six percent out of this budget. And then say, tell us why we should cut six percent. And you have them come back, you know? Or, or you find like Kathleen found a line item that, you know, maybe we should zero it out. That, when do we do that?
So we, we can do it that day as.
That's gonna be a long day.
Yes, it is.
So we'll be, we'll be spending our, our burger and pizza fund. Burgers for lunch, pizza for dinner and, yeah, yeah, because it's gonna be, it's gonna be a long day. Back to what, what Tom was saying, if we, if we can show the revenue stream projection to start with. Do the two percent rollback on the property tax to set the tax rate, property tax rate. And come up with that dollar amount, see where we're at. Going to the budget request wise, and then just start going through.
And then we can, we can work between now and then to try to find those lower, the low hanging fruit, if you will, from, to God, so that you're not um, bogged down with that. And see if we can bring that.
Scalpel versus hatchet is what you're telling me? I don't know.
Still go line by line. I'm not trying to prevent you from that. I'm just trying to make the day shorter.
I got, I got you, I got you.
By trying to work smart.
That's May, what?
Fourteenth.
I don't have any any credit for May fifteen. It's like, there's not enough time.
All right. And any other discussions with our county administrator or our risk manager?
Thank you very much.
Uh, I will provide this page about ASAP to all, all participants here. As soon as they get a copy, I'll give it to Ms. Rollenheim.
All right. All right. Well, with that, let me, oh, I gotta find the next, what did I do with it?
Oh, one thing, where's his contingency, contingency on the last page, eight of eight? Contingency is, is the one million seven, is that just, things that can happen?
So those are actually already obligated. That's our ARPA funding. So that's, when we, when we have our, our transfers to where those are gonna go, that's gonna go to facilities and health. Um, and then there are some other uh, projects that have not been covered yet that are already obligated to ARPA funding. That's where those will go.
That's the opioid.
Yeah, I'm so sorry. I was thinking that was the ARPA funding.
Contingency fund that, that we've been receiving the opioid settlement.
Pardon, straggle that. So, so that money is just for.
That's not general fund money. That's, that's specifically been in the opioid settlement agreement as to how we can use it. And that's working with, it is right now to get their, their approval to pool that money with the county's money or bigger bank to the book.
And, and that would be for rehab or something like that?
Um, one idea is the, um, is a diversion, drug diversion program through the county attorney's office so that those drug cases don't end up in court, but through diversion to enhance their diversion programs. And um, Narcan, uh, I believe, outreach through the health department. So those, that is some, I mean, that's not gonna take up the whole one point seven. And that's accruing as each settlement check comes in periodically, that fund grows. So it's a thirty-year settlement, so over time.
Rehab and added a hospital, county hospital.
That kind of outreach for, for diversion. I went to the word on crisis, I'm crisis study. We, we did look at that with the health department. And none of the current.
You may pass the amount to all purchases.
Are like in hospital?
Not hospital, but or like um, community bridges, you know, C cap, he go, he receives. Trying to get, we haven't given up. We're just trying to go about it in another way.
And that, that budget will actually increase after the end of the fiscal year, then be sure of exactly how much cash.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. All right. Well, if that's it, let me uh, just say thanks for coming.
Yeah, thank you.
Truly, appreciate it. All right. So next meeting's gonna be at one o'clock in the hearing room for budget discussions on the Human Resources Department, AJ, coming up at one. All right, so we're adjourned.